Okay, good evening everyone. Happy October, welcome to the town board work session of October first, twenty twenty four at the town of Newcastle. We are here for our work session, so may I have a motion to open the work session?
Oh.
Set it. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are going to start off with a discussion about lantern flies, which has been a real concern all over the region. And uh you know, people have been very concerned about what to do and have been spotting lantern flies everywhere in our town parks and reserves, in their backyards, at the Metro North Chapel Park train station. And um people are worried and wondering what to do. So I thought it would be helpful to have Dennis, our environmental coordinator, come and talk to us about uh what he has found out about best practices and what to expect and how to move forward with this issue and how to how to think about it.
As you probably know, the conservation board's been thinking about this as well.
Yeah.
Sure, so.
So Dennis, thank you for being being here with us.
You're quite welcome, sure. Uh so this is timely um for some of what I have have in front of me. Just to show you, I mean uh inspired by Holly uh at the uh early September conservation board meeting, not last night, we uh quickly kind of put this together. And this was like on display at community day, so I have this as a as a file and uh we can discuss if you wanna you know, put it in a newsletter, put it on the website. But it's just basically sort of that, um as you said, just sort of like quick bullets of of best practices and sources for other information, who to report sightings to. Uh we had a QR code uh to take us to this on the on the website. So we kinda had that, at least for community day, had some good discussion there. Um prior to that, I was fortunate to attend September fifth's Zoom presentation from Cornell Cooperative and New York State DEC's Integrated Test Management. Um I spoke with them today, cause this was a recorded meeting. Um when I went to their website, they have last year's meeting from September uh as the quick link to YouTube and speaking with Hillary Eufor, she's gonna try to get it up uh on the site later this week. So I think that is something that we could certainly include a link to uh for our website, cause I thought this was very good and uh did a great job of sort of going through, uh which I'll discuss a little bit about, you know, when it first appeared, what we learned about it, what what what's here now and what we can expect going forward. So um so I guess to start, it it did uh our documented first appearance in in the US is two thousand fourteen in Pennsylvania. So a lot of what they've uh learned and recommended is a result of, I guess, uh the do's and don'ts and how how sort of that unfolded in in going through Pennsylvania. Uh right now, um as far as October first that we're at, um you're starting to lose the adults. Uh you certainly will lose them en masse by uh first frost and this is it for them. This is the last hurrah. Uh so what, however, in nature, you know, what's the most important thing? It's what's next. So they're obviously, you know, the egg laying phase is uh is, you know, what would be uh, you know, occurring and that's, you know, kind of what they're doing now. But as far as what you see and what's lying around, even I noticed just today on on the bottom of of a tree of heaven that had a number of lantern flies, there were a few dead ones at the bottom of the tree. I recall seeing that three weeks ago when I was encountering them. So so from that perspective, um it's happening, right? They're they're starting to die off and you know, there's really not much else to do unless you wanna expedite that by hitting them or you know, stepping on them. But it's it it's happening. Um as far as what had happened uh prior, I know the county earlier this year on their just county parklands, you may have seen, I know they were doing the backpack vacuum thing. Um if they if they saw them, uh just to, I guess, try to lessen lessen the numbers. Um this presentation obviously covered uh not only like, I'll I'll say for lack of a better term, suburban areas, like we don't make our money from agriculture. And then agricultural areas specifically, believe it or not, other than tree of heaven, they love grapes. So they had pictures of, I guess, you know, you don't think of Pennsylvania wineries, but they had pictures of like these vineyards that I thought it was winter condition. It was like, no, this is spring and there's not a single leaf on any of these vines, cause it just killed them. So so that, you know, even watching this Cornell Cooperative, like when they talked about more aggressive means, um even chemical means, that was really the only subject matter that they were discussing that for, was to, you know, sort of protect livelihoods, wineries and agriculture. When it got more to, you know, sort of these settings, it was just more, um you know, A, the physical means that I mentioned with respect to if you wanted to vacuum. But B, but they've also observed is that the populations tend to have like a one to two year sort of annoyance level of noticeable mass, whatever, and then they kind of move on. I, you know, I don't know if move on means north, south, going back towards the Midwest. Obviously, there's an ocean at some point to the east. But but they said, you know, not to use the word disappear, cause that's strong. But it's just not the numbers that you encounter when you sort of are experiencing the height of their of their populations.
I mean, is the thought that I mean equivalent to the skee bug issue? Because sometimes they come en masse and then sometimes we don't see them.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, it's, as I said, you know, with certain populations, you sort of maybe over protracted periods, you expect something like this. But you know, since this is, our start point is two thousand fourteen and we're only ten years in, it's definitely not a wide uh database range. But but again, from what they've seen in Pennsylvania, that's kind of sort of how it's how it's unfolded. So um you know, as 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 far as, you know, private properties, I'll say that I've had individuals call me and ask, you know, I'm interested in removing tree of heaven on my property, cause I, whatever, I can't look at them anymore. Or, you know, their honeydew is staining my deck. Okay, do I need a tree removal permit? And I said, if you aren't genuinely just going to remove tree of heaven, I I I would not require a tree removal permit. I said, however, I would ask, I said, if you're interested in not allowing um next year's population to to visit, uh if you wanna wait until what I described as sort of their their adult die off or until first frost, you could remove the trees at that time, this way, you know, giving that false sense of reproductive security that they, you know, they've actually laid eggs on those trees and you're actually taking those away as well with the with the chipper and the and the disposal. So so that's the recommendations that I give into individuals that wanna remove those trees on their property, cause they don't wanna see them. I would just wait until that phase to sort of have the the best bang for your buck, if that's your intention.
I I I think, sorry. What what I've done, because I don't like me either, is I've inspected the trees on my property and I found those mud end packs.
Yeah.
And and I, as far as I can reach, even with a ladder or chair, crushed, 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 crushed.
That works.
Uh and I think people should be encouraged to do that, at least in the visible area, if they want to go to the woods if they have them, because it's a simple way to at least feel like you're doing something, whether it is or not, I don't know, but they're pretty clear that these are the sacks or the the.
Right, I mean, if if you're able to see the uh.
And they they could be on your sidewalk, they they're pretty uh progressive and artistic.
So this this presentation actually showed where, um I think it was uh like a uh like an outdoor folding chair that was on its side under a tree that obviously had been there for a while. And they picked it up and there were a couple of the egg sacks on that. So it's not, I agree, it's not just trees. They said the best way to do it would be almost like carrying like a like a small Ziploc or a jar, have some isopropyl alcohol in there and just scrape them right into there and then the alcohol would kill them. So that, you know, that that works as well if you wanna, you see the eggs and you wanna, you know, get rid of them as well.
So Dennis, considering the the volume that we've seen this summer, what what can we expect from their laying eggs, from that volume of lantern flies?
Mm-hmm.
You know, laying eggs, what what do you think is going to happen next summer?
So that's, you know, that that's difficult to predict, because to the point of of this presentation that if there's this migration and there's this move on, then there has to be a point at which either A, there's there's a a reduction in fecundity, I guess is the word, that, you know, they they're just not successful in in the eggs actually hatching.
What was that word?
Fecundity?
Or does it count?
And then uh uh or that um, you know, when when they're able to fly after, you know, sort of the larval stage that you see here, they they choose to just leave leave the area. Um so I'm, I I, you know, considering that this year seemed to be the first year that en masse people were 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 noticing them. Um I don't know if next year is 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 year two of that anticipation or if this was the second year, because I certainly noticed them last year uh as as year one.
I think it was more in the media this year, so people were more more concerned. But but what are you suggesting that people do? I mean, other than the scraping and putting into plastic bags or bottles of alcohol? Is there, um I'm just curious, what's on the bullet points there that you had at community day? Is there something that you can review very briefly?
Um I mean, other than uh.
Just just for anyone listening.
Sure. I mean, other than for that physical description or um, you know, I mean, obviously, their their preferred tree, I'll say, is is tree of heaven. But you know, they they will choose other trees if you sort of eliminate that. So like, for example, what I wanted to prevent was individuals also removing the tree, let's say, a month ago, and these guys, but you know, they're kind of like plant hopper flyers, they would just glide, you know, they're not gonna stick around if the chainsaws are going and they'll just end up on another tree. And if it's not tree of heaven, you you could have worsened the problem by potentially, oh, wait, that tree I like. Now they're all here, what am I supposed to do?
Right, cause that was something people were talking about doing, putting down their, you know, tree of heaven at that point.
Right, right.
So what's the point you said to wait until, you said earlier, to after frost?
Yeah, I I I was saying, the people who were calling me, let's say, in the last three weeks or so, who you could just tell from the voice on the other end of the phone, you know, are kind of getting towards that wit's end and. But at the same time, to their credit, I have people saying, but I wanna do what's sort of best and right, like and not just react, what do you think? And I said, well, I I understand you wanna remove the tree and I think the best bang for your buck is to sort of wait until the adults have have died uh off. Because if they did lay any eggs on that tree and you're removing that tree, then in essence, you know, you're sort of helping, it's like a double, double shot. You're you're getting rid of a preferred host tree and the eggs on that preferred host tree that they've laid that are gonna potentially hatch in in spring or next year.
Right. Dennis, something else that might be helpful to add to this is helping people identify the tree of heaven.
Okay. You're correct, I I I take that for granted, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
My own, got it, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't seen what's what's on there, so it's it's difficult to to figure out what's missing and what's not. Um so does any, everyone wanna look at this, are these two the same?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so it's a description of what the spotted lantern fly is. You know, what are the threats and what you can do to combat the lantern fly, et cetera, et cetera. So I I would like to put this in the town newsletter. So if you could get this, um you know, kind of in a shortened condensed version for me, so I could print it, so it's not too long.
Okay.
That that would be helpful.
Okay.
Um.
And I do think this would be a good opportunity for the conservation board to take a step into the educational piece, if I wanted to do it, you know.
Right, I I'm sure that this won't be the only time that people will be learning about it. I'm sure the concerns will continue, so that that would be very helpful. Um, okay, does anyone have any questions for Dennis? No?
Thank you, Dennis.
All right, thank you so much, Dennis.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah, and keep us posted when they update that.
Here, Frank, can you pass this to Dennis?
Yeah. Yeah.
Dennis, can I say your information is fecundic? It's so it's so much. I have Google.
I was just saying, most of the word.
I did, I I felt like I never heard the word before.
Did it make sense? What what does it mean? Is it like a salad dressing or something?
It says utility is the actual number of offspring. Fecundity, fecundity is the possible number of offspring that could produce a leg time.
Valves.
It's uh.
Valves, Dennis.
Wow, yes.
You've never heard that word before, Jeremy?
None of us.
I use it every day. I know, it just rolls off the tongue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dennis. Thank you, Dennis.
I'll get I'll get this, yeah, I'll help this one. Okay. Thank you.
Good night, Dennis.
All right, good night, well, thank you.
Okay.
Good night. The expectation of the lander club. And for every resident that notices and emails us, they get a prize.
All right.
Word of the week.
Word of the week.
Oh, I like that.
Okay. Um is Jill? She's on Zoom.
She's online.
Oh, you're on Zoom, okay, all right. You're on mute, Jill. Okay, so.
You're, we can't hear you.
Whenever she's wearing those headphones.
So you know, I I think if we're talking about the next topic, the uh amending chapter ninety-three, you worked with uh with Tom.
Tom and and Dennis as well.
And Dennis, yeah, do you wanna just describe that there are really minor changes
Sure, I mean, this is just to clarify, this is on a proposed local law
that you just wanna describe?
on then amending the property maintenance code, chapter ninety-three. To give them a specificity in terms of access areas to homes.
Well, you know, just one second, before we get into the weeds of the actual language, I just wanna let people know that we are amending this, because there was a concern um that the property maintenance law would prevent um things that are important to the town, like pollinator gardens and the planting of uh native native species. And you know, there was an effort by some members of the conservation board to engage in a in a program that involved um native gardens, native plantings and pollinator gardens. And that became kind of a roadblock, which I think um the law really didn't prevent, but I think it wasn't clear enough. So that's the reason behind our amendment of of this particular law.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that, it's really just more for safety, health, welfare, because again, not to be considered without that position, but it also allows safe ingress and egress for fire, police, EMS, should they have to go to your house and in access through either a doorway, an access window. This really just clarifies that the area should be, those particular areas should be free and clear of any type of debris so or any type of, you know, you know, vegetation, just to make sure you're you're right, you're at your egress windows and your doors. But other than that, that's really all it gives this local law, just to clarify that.
Right, and so the main point, as it says right here, is to afford safe passage to all principal and accessory structures, so it's safe passage um it for emergency, medical services, police and fire personnel.
Right.
That's the whole point. And we are saying, we're we're being even more specific in saying that this does not apply to flower and pollinator gardens or um propagules, I'm not sure what that is, propagules.
That's a Dennis word.
Yeah.
That's true words.
A Dennis word.
But that's another word, maybe, if I'm hearing.
Yeah, that word didn't make it in the statute, but propagules definitely did.
Propagules are or plants germinated from garden grown stock as well as naturally recruited from wild populations.
I'll explain what that is. It goes in a form, it's a vegetative structure that can become detached from a plant and give rise to a new plant.
Like a seed, like a seed.
A gene bud, a sucker or a spore.
Very good.
Or a hydra.
All right. And there will be a queen, so.
Learning so much, girl, learning so much tonight.
My goodness.
So it it's fairly simple, but what what we're going to do next is send this to the conservation board to see if they have any comments on it, just to make sure that it's hundred percent clear. And um you know, I I think it should be pretty simple and straightforward. Does anyone have any thoughts about?
Thank you.
Yeah, after they review it, we'll set a public hearing in uh probably in November.
All right, great. Okay.
I think the next uh conservation board meeting is the end of October.
Um first weeks.
Should be the beginning of November.
Just in November, yeah.
First week in November.
Yeah, we moved, um.
Okay. Yeah, I would just say, whatever comments you get from the the board, just send it back to me. That way I can incorporate, okay, discuss it the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, so you ready to move on? Okay, we'll move on to the Indian Brook Croton Board Watershed Protection Overlay District. Um Sabrina, do you wanna take over?
Sure. Sure, so um as you know, that you've closed the public hearing on the Indian Brook Croton watershed overlay zone. I made some changes to the proposed local law, um I can walk you through them. I think Lauren can share the screen and put it up there if you guys would like. Um just to kind of show you the red lines uh based on public comments. Though the comments that were redlined were sent to DEC and they're okay with the changes. So if you or board would like to make those changes, you can. If there's additional changes that you have, we can discuss them tonight and I can get them approved. So um do you want me to walk you through?
Yeah, I mean, I I would just give a little background to people who are just tuning in, that this was, this was long incoming, this has started many, many years ago. I wanna say ten years ago.
Yeah, at least.
Yeah, so it was a cooperative effort among five municipalities, um the towns of Cortland, Austining and Newcastle and the villages of Austining and Crotan Hudson.
Mm-hmm.
Um and it was a grant from the DEC Hudson River Esprit program to Westchester County.
To put together a plan.
Um to protect this watershed area um and to have all those municipalities develop consistent goals.
Correct.
Um and and we had the most um stringent of them and the other municipalities had to come up to our standards mostly, which were already established for us. But it's basically to protect the drinking water and the area's natural resources.
Correct.
So I I just want people to understand, you know, everyone understands the importance of drinking water. And and that's what we're trying to do here. This this serves as the primary uh water, drinking water source for Austining and also serves as a as a backup for the town of Newcastle.
Mm-hmm.
So um yeah, we've had three public hearings and there've been two planning board discussions on the matter.
Mm-hmm.
And so we've had uh many discussions about it, so I just want, you know.
Sure.
To give that that background.
I'm so curious, someone.
Um, okay, so let's go through the.
Okay, so the first change that was made was on page five. Um a definition for wellhead was added to the code. There was a lot of concern, there's references regarding setback distances from wellheads. There are, the wellhead discussion in this document refers to um commercial um wellheads, not somebody's well in their backyard. So that is a clarification that was added to the definitions. The next change was on page seven, there's a a couple of changes. And um item twelve prohibited uses and practices um talks about protecting existing structures and existing utilities, just an add-on to that provision to address existing elements that are on people's properties that they want to keep. Um under performance criteria, we just clarified the language in the reference document to the most recent um stormwater design manual. So that we were, and then we left room if there are future updates to that design manual. Further down on the page, Lauren. Thank you.
And these were all in response to the feedback that we got from public comments.
Public comments, yes.
I just want we could know.
Yes, both those.
You know, we did respond.
Yes, both those comments that they provided verbally to you at your meeting and written comments that I had received as well. So on page eight, uh item fifteen, there's some clarification. This was a big issue, people were concerned about not being able to use salt and other substances to clear their driveways and make theirs their hill driveway state in the wintertime. So we pared this down a little bit and just said you can use an amount restricted to the minimum amount needed for safety purposes. And this was really something that the community felt strongly about, so we made that change.
Is that like, is that a regional person standard, Lino?
Yes.
Yes, and we took out as determined by the highway superintendent. So that that would have been an awkward thing to do every time you salt your driveway, so.
Exactly. Correct. Well, it was mainly intended for him when doing main roadways. It's true, he wasn't targeted. It wasn't to address private driveways, but that didn't make sense, given our area of the watershed.
It was on.
It was, and it was causing so a lot of controversy.
So much anxiety.
Yeah, there's a lot of strife over this.
It was, and the wellhead too, I think that's an excellent change.
Right, yes. And then on page nine, um there's an exception. Um it it really is, um this sentence on item five at the top of the page talks about uh no new disturbances except and for maintenance activities, right? Some maintenance activities may be a new disturbance. So we wanted to make sure that people had things within the restricted areas, they had the ability to go in and maintain what they had. Not necessarily construct new or create new, but to maintain what they had. On the bottom of that page, um it talks about um removal of invasive and native species and compliance with any other applicable laws, rules or regulations. This is kind of a catch-all, so we don't run into conflict with other programs or laws where um we can uh we we can maintain our properties and get rid of invasives. And I think that was.
Did we cover the septic? We changed the septic.
I was just gonna ask that.
We did, hang on a second.
I was looking for that.
It's there, I know it's there. Let me back up. Oh, it's on page eight, six, G six. Page eight, so just since we at least want to.
It'd be surgery every five years, period.
Yeah, and so that's a change, that was a big change. And that's really more of an administrative assistance to the town. In the east of Hudson watershed, um folks are required by law to pump their septic systems every five years. So this change now brings the Indian watershed area into that fold and will greatly assist the town as we learn to notify folks and have the control over who's pumping, who's not pumping, who's inspecting, who's not.
That makes a lot of sense.
And it's fair to be consistent with everyone.
Yes, yes, yes. And DEC had no problems with any of these changes, so you're free to amend further if you so choose or adopt as presented to you.
Okay, also, I had another specific question.
Sure.
One of the residents, and I think they came to our, one of our previous meetings. Um it's regarding subdivisions. Someone um wanted to know if they could subdivide their property for um a house for their child, for one of their children. So what would you say, designer, about that?
I, if somebody is interested in subdividing the property, they should goodly talk to a land use professional. Um you know, they can may take advantage of a lot of tools online, of mapping, wetland mapping, adding buffers to your property. You can take a look at buildable area through a geographic information system that is connected through our website to Westchester County and the state DEC. But your best bet would be to speak to a land use professional, an architect or an engineer who can actually look at your property, dimension your property, and even go so far as to do testing to see if you could get another well or septic system on your property.
Right.
Um so in no way does this legislation prohibit anybody from looking at their property for subdivisions.
Thank you.
Okay, it is very consistent with our existing code. We do not have prohibitive codes, we have permissive codes, which means you can do things, but you may have to do other things to do what you wanna do, particularly when it comes to environmental protection.
Right, just like any other property that may have wetlands and steep slopes.
Correct. Correct.
That we all have to abide by.
Correct, and and I do wanna remind the board that we are the last of the five municipalities to adopt this legislation. Um we wanted to wait to make sure all the other municipalities uh did their due diligence and adopted the legislation, so we are the last ones.
Do we share the changes that we've made and we're okayed with the other municipalities for them to consider as well?
Yes. Yeah, we, well, it was shared with the town of Cortland, who has been the coordinator of this project, and DEC.
Okay. Okay, great.
But again, you know, we're very different municipalities. We have the largest land area and the largest zoning. So it's it's very different than the village of Austining or Crotan Hudson.
I just think that, you know, the collaborative nature of sharing, you know, what we saw is good.
Yeah. Yeah, and I've been in touch with the town of Austining supervisor to let her know where we are on this, so.
Oh, good.
I mean, you did a great job. I just wanna thank you so much.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
I know when we started, residents were really upset, but we were patient and we took to heart all of the comments that we were receiving. Sabrina, you did a lot of work, I really appreciate it. And I'm happy that we were able to edit this, take into a. And I'm happy that we were able to edit this, take into account a lot of the feedback that we were getting, I'm really happy to see some of the changes. I think are just gonna make all of our residents feel a lot better about this legislation.
Great, my pleasure.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I'll third.
Thank you.
I also wanna thank the residents from the uh district, from the West End who came forward several times
Yes.
um and really articulated well what their specific concerns were.
Yeah.
They did good research and good reading, they were very specific, and it's helpful, like because then Sabrina could really,
A hundred percent.
you know, go in surgically and and make the changes that needed to happen um to honor those concerns. So, you know, they were very compelling, um I think we, in response to those thoughts, handled it in a thoughtful manner. Like we, we did wait, as was suggested by um some residents, until the other municipalities did what they needed to do um to come up to where we were basically at already. Um and you know, some of the safety concerns um were very compelling, like the de-icing and.
Sure.
So um I'm glad everyone um came and and spoke to us about it.
I feel like this is an example of the process we've just like implemented, right?
Mm-hmm.
We put something out, we have the public hearings, we listen, and in the end, I hope we come up with something that is uh, makes everybody happy.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I think, so I think it's a good example of the process working.
Yeah, and um similar about Holly saying, I think this is why we have public hearings. And I think uh sometimes people think we do this just as a rote process, but it, the, the process really does work. As long as we're willing to listen and take feedback and do an authentic job of it. So I think it worked and we listened and we have our final product and I, I think it's um, it's, it's really been very helpful to have the residents be involved and um take so much time to, to come to us and let us know what, what their situations are and what they're facing, so thank you for doing that, thank you to everyone. Thank you Sabrina, you've done a lot from summarizing the code, getting in touch with the residents, answering so many questions.
Yes.
Um we really appreciate that, thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, and so now, we're ready to move on and Sabrina, we will continue.
Continue the thing.
To be looking to you to talk us through um this application. So we have received an application for Fifty North Really, and we are now engaged in a completeness review.
Correct.
The developer has um provided this, and so Sabrina, do you wanna walk us through what the process is going to be?
Completeness, huh? Yeah. So um the legislation that was adopted, the NG zero legislation sets forth a very specific and timely process for processing an application. While the application was submitted to the town board and you all have a copy of it, I am responsible for ensuring that that application addresses your resolution of approval regarding the legislation, your seeker determination, and the actual components of the legislation that is dictating this process. Um the completeness review means that the applicant has addressed all aspects of that seeker analysis, the negative declaration and the legislation, and that the plans and the packet of information that you have in hard copy that is on our website, that that is everything that was talked about and looks like what you examined when you were creating that legislation. So that completeness review is underway right now, and so both myself, and I have to give credit to Bob Siole, the town engineer, he's also assisting with that completeness review from an engineering perspective. What it means is, is all the information there and is the detail there that you need at this stage of the game to approve a special use permit in the site plan. Once it is deemed complete, your clock starts ticking. And that is when you will address this application at a meeting. You have an opportunity to engage the planning board in your discussion, and then you have a timeframe as to when you need to set a public hearing.
What's that timeframe?
Sixty-two days, it's sixty-two days, okay?
Right after your determination of completeness.
After it's scheduled on your first meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Sixty, sixty days from the first day.
Sixty-two days from when, when I deem it complete, it has to be scheduled on your next town board meeting.
And then from that.
And then the sixty-two day clock starts.
From that day, it's sixty-two days to schedule a public hearing.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, now, it should be very easy for you, once this application is deemed complete, because that means it reflects the exact same project that you reviewed when considering the legislation for adoption, okay? So it, it is, it is, we are at a very critical stage right now determining its completeness. Okay, and that's where it stands, and you will not, it will not be scheduled on your agenda until it is deemed complete.
And if you and Bob don't deem it to complete, they have time to cure.
We will send. Yes, absolutely, there's no timeframe for them
Okay.
within which to cure, you know, we will send them, and we will have a conversation with them, we will document what is complete or what is not complete, and we will send them correspondence, correspondence detailing that, you all will receive copy of that correspondence, so you will be kept in, in the loop and understand why it is not complete. And I think Holly, you had mentioned last time the application isn't signed, you know, that is a, a huge omission, it needs to be signed. You know, that's just an example of something very small, but it is not complete.
And Sabrina, I wanna ask you to address the discrepancy, uh the letter is dated June twelfth of this year, but it's marked um September sixteenth as received by the town, so for anyone who is looking at our documents and sees that discrepancy, I'd like, uh I'd like that to be explained.
Mm-hmm. Right. Correct. Yeah, so when we receive an application, we need to make sure that there's no outstanding issues in any other avenue of town operations. Um that there's not an open building permit or a violation, or there's other matters that need to be cured. We received an application, but it was not um eligible to be considered a submission at that time. And it wasn't until we stamped it received that it was admissible for you to consider as an application.
Okay.
So there was something that needed addressing for your review and it was, once that was completed, you were able to receive it?
For processing, yes.
Right, they had not complied with certain underlying requirements.
Correct. Correct.
But they have now and everything is away.
We have now, everything, yes, we are reviewing it for completeness now.
Okay.
Okay, and just, just for like um general ballpark timing, how long does it typically take? Or maybe there's not typically in this case.
There's not typically in this case.
So how long would you estimate um before we might be discussing it?
I think. I, I, right now, I'm really thinking.
You can't, you can't, yeah, it's hard to answer that one because doing this on the other side for developers as well, I mean, it all depends how,
Yeah.
what the application looks like, because if, if it's missing documentation, we can't schedule for a public hearing, we can't present it to your board. So right now, it's with the technicians, if you will, so once we all decide that, okay, we're happy with the application's complete,
Mm-hmm.
but that varies, I mean, it could be two months, it could be, I, I mean, I had a client where it took almost eight months to get the ride together to get to the plant, so.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's, that's helpful, I just.
So it's really no rule of thumb, really.
Right, also I think this is where we wanna make sure that everything is in order, we don't wanna go back and find out that it, something is missing, so.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
I would say not to rush it, it's better to do it well than to do it fast.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, no, our, our goal is to make sure that this application resembles uh the requirements of the legislation and the environmental review.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you Sabrina.
You're welcome, have a good night.
Okay, good night. Um, let's see. Jill or Rob, do you wanna go through the administrative items?
I think since Jill's microphone's not working now.
Yeah, you go first.
I'll cover that. Okay, so we have three different uh retroactive payment and claims.
Right.
Uh we have the adoption of minutes and the monthly reports from August. Uh we are approving the continuation of scanning project, that's for the development department. We are uh continuing the process of scanning the old documents um to make them electronic. Um we have the authorization to accept a cash bond agreement for Reitman. We have two change orders up at the Chapack where they're doing the drainage and the parking lot project uh for VNS Construction, they are the contractor. Uh one is fifty-six thousand two fifty for removal of rock. Uh once they got, uh once they went to install some of the drainage in there, they realized there was more rock. And then they've got a three thousand dollar change order for uh ground fault interrupters that they need to install uh on the light posts out there. So I think both of those change orders fall within the contingency that we had for the project, so that's, that's a good thing. Um we're retroactively approving the lamppost banners for the Chapakua Book Festival that was last weekend. Um we are approving the twenty-twenty-four holiday lighting, uh the total for the basement was seventeen thousand four hundred. We have added the option for thirty-three thousand two fifty to add uh snowflakes on the fence at Millwood Ball Field this year, so that'll be in addition to what we've done in the past.
Uh I wanna say something about that, last year, and I think this was an oversight, but there were a number of poles in Millwood that were missed with, with lighting and snowflakes, um uh large numbers of them, you know, I'm sure we can get back to you with the precise details,
Okay.
but I, I just wanna make sure, that I wanna know whether that was an oversight or whether that, that was just not in the budget.
I, I wanna say I think that Lori was able to take a drive around, scope out some places that were maybe missed,
Okay.
and I, I think that the B A B had been working to make sure that parts of Millwood were made.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that Millwood gets sprinkled a lot.
Even when. As a holiday cheer.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh okay, so we have an authorization to reject uh bids for the after-school bus transportation for our uh after-school recreation programs. Um unfortunately, we went out to bid Chapakua Transportation, missed the deadline, I think, and forgot to bid. The only bidder was actually not able to provide the service to us as we had requested, they were an out-of-town company and they weren't familiar with what we were doing.
Oh, that's true.
So we're able to reject those bids and then uh in conversation with Chapakua Transportation, they're actually going to honor the price, so we're just extending the contract one more year.
Oh, that's amazing.
And uh they've honored the pricing from the prior year. Uh we're looking for authorization to purchase firearm components uh to install at the Chapakua Performing Arts Center. Uh we have an authorization to declare surplus and scrap material, uh scrap, these are, I think, roll-off containers uh that were disposing of from D P W. Uh an authorization to use town properties, C VAC would like to use the train station parking lot for training. Uh we have the authorization to establish a capital project for the purchase of a VAC truck uh and the authorization to purchase that VAC truck. Uh we've applied for one grant and possibly uh will apply for a second grant to hopefully cover the cost of this. This is gonna be useful um as we start the new uh stormwater requirements.
These would be MS four requirements.
Yes, uh our current equipment is um not capable of performing the volume of work that we need to perform, so. This new machine, uh the old machine, I think it's probably, it's over ten years old, maybe closer to fifteen years old, so. Um this new machine will help us comply with those requirements. Uh we have an authorization to approve a banner request from Millwood Fire Company. Uh authorization to accept a proposal for H V A C maintenance system. Uh authorization to approve the service agreement for D N R, that's the company that services our um, our, our audio and video systems, that's up to Chapack. Uh we have the authorization to approve the engraving services for Christopher Carey. And uh finally authorization to approve the performance bond for the Newcastle Fire District uh for their construction.
Okay, so that's it for the administrative items.
Yes.
Okay, so we are ready for our resolutions, do we have a, a rock on resolutions?
Yeah, we have our email.
Or the email? Okay, so someone will read them that. I, 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 I do wanna recognize, although this is a work session and we don't take public comments, I do wanna recognize that we have the brother and family of um of the two brothers on the Carey family, um and I'm sorry that this is not a, this is not a public meeting, so we don't have
It's fine.
a public comment, but you made a very moving public comment, and um we are really truly happy to be doing this today. And um it's meaningful that you're here, well, as you do it, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. And I just, I know, this, this is just for, for you to have this panel, okay, and some pictures of Chris and some documentation. This accident report and things, I think it's appropriate that, I mean, you, you were taking our word.
Thank you so much. Yeah.
This happened, we've had discussions with you all, my brother sent some stuff along with my other brother, but just uh, that's for, you know, some of Chris, thank you, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, and then people like Fred is here in town, as, as Fred Marzella is advocating for this.
So we will keep this and uh.
Yeah, Chris wanted that.
Yes, so you'll be here as we, as we pass this resolution and how we do it.
Thanks.
And, and we did mention in executive session, they're gonna be able to complete that by that for a second.
Great, thank you, thanks so much.
Yes.
That, that was the big concern, yeah, thanks.
Okay, so let's get started, um Holly, you wanna start?
Sure, uh I move to adopt items one through twenty-three, listed on the consent agenda, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay.
Just to note that was the approval.
That's item twenty-one.
Wish you the same, you're all right. That was confident service, so.
Um I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of nine hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventeen cents, listed on the summary AP check register and detail voucher detail reports dated September eleventh twenty twenty-four. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, September eleventh twenty-four, second.
All in favor?
Um I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of one million five hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-one cents, listed on the summary AP check register and detail voucher detail reports dated September eighteenth twenty twenty-four. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, September eighteenth twenty twenty-four, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Are you all painted?
Yes, sorry, I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of six hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-four, thirty-four cents, listed on the summary AP check register and detail voucher detail reports dated September twenty-fifth twenty twenty-four. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Thursday twenty-sixth, Thursday, September twenty-sixth twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. I move to accept the retirement of Robert Siole from the position of town engineer within the development department effective December thirty-first twenty twenty-four. The town would like to thank Bob for his thirty-two years of dedicated service.
Bob, I won't second it, you can't go.
I'm so sad.
I'm gonna withhold, this meeting is being accepted, thank you Bob for everything.
Thank you so much, Bob, we're, we're very disappointed, but we wish you the very, very best in what you do and your, in your retirement.
Thank you, Bob.
And uh but we'll be seeing you until December, so you might change your mind. I press it, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I move to, oh, do we do, the phone line, mom, sorry.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
I move to accept, doesn't, accept their retirement, Kathleen Burns, the position of court clerk, effective October fifteenth twenty twenty-four. I would like to thank you Kathy, thank Kathy for twelve years of dedicated service and having worked with Kathy for many years, I can attest that she was a fabulous asset to the community.
Absolutely.
Hope you come back. Thank you Kathy, second. All in favor?
Hi.
I move to accept the resignation and leave as coach chair of the advisory committee effective September nineteenth twenty twenty-four, the town's meeting.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
I move to authorize the appointment of Stuart Rosen as member of the planning board for the remainder of an existing term affected through March thirty-first twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Um we're not doing it, are we?
No.
Are we?
No, because we have to make some.
No.
Yeah, right, 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 okay.
We're table that, we're tabing. So we're tabling eight?
Yeah.
I move to adopt a local law regarding the Indian Brook Crotin Gorge watershed protection over the Lake District.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Yay.
And I can read the rest of one?
And one more? Yes.
Um I move to accept the probation failure termination of employee number twenty-nine forty, laborer within the Recreation and Parks Department effective October thirty, twenty twenty-four, closing this.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your turn.
Your turn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are turned. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.